Say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Teresa, please take the roll.
Hey, Mayor Jones.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
Bowen.
Here.
Parachek.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
And Shilling.
Here.
All right. Do we have any additions or approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting?
Motion to approve the agenda. Second.
Any discussion?
Aaron will not be visiting tonight. Sorry, I was trying to get that in my report.
Okay.
So he was able to find plenty of local businesses that allowed them to sell their pumpkins.
Okay, so we will scratch that.
But he thanks you.
Oh yeah.
Absolutely.
All right. Anything else? Do we have to amend that without that?
I would, yeah. We're going to adjourn the agenda without that one.
Move to amend my motion to approve the removal of our visitor, Aaron Edgcombe.
Cool.
Second.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mattson.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Parachek.
Yes.
Shilling.
Yes.
All right. How about the minutes from the nine to meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes from the nine to. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Shilling.
Yes.
Parachek.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
All right. Bells are in your packet. Any action or comments from the council?
Motion to approve the bills as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mattson.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Parachek.
Yes.
Shilling.
Yes.
All right. Well, this is the time for public comment. Anything that is not on the agenda, if you'd like to address the council, you sure can. So most of you are here for a couple of our topics, so. All right. Hearing none. How are we doing per time?
It's.
Oh, seven oh two. I'm getting way too fast.
Anybody have anything to complain about?
Jokes. Any good jokes or anything?
I do. I've got something to say.
We don't know. We don't want you to talk.
Can we do the special event?
Yes, I think that's what we'll do.
Okay.
We're going to jump past the seven oh five hearing and we will go to the special event, the West Central Homecoming Parade on October 10th. I don't know if there's anybody here from the school. If not, all of the information is in your packet. It's very similar to years past. Fee was paid, I assume, and everything like that.
Motion to approve special event application for West Central Homecoming Parade on October 10th.
Second.
Any discussion? Wish there was somebody here. I think that's why we're so late. That seems late. Maybe it's not.
It's like the last year when I was taking it off. I don't know why, but.
Yep.
I mean, falls.
All right. Hearing none, no discussion. We will vote. Shilling.
Yes.
Parachek.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
How many do we have? Seven oh four. We're about there. I think we'll move back up. Do everything by the clock, you know. Let's make the computer speed it up a little bit. All right. We have a seven oh five rezone hearing. This is the first reading of ordinance seven six seven. This is a request to rezone a parcel one five nine nine four from county agricultural to municipal residential and municipal community commercial and municipal natural resource conservation. Information is in your packet. This is the ground that sits out what I call the corner of Colton Road and Highway 38. Is that correct? That's not the official title, but that's.
It did go to planning and zoning at their last meeting.
Yeah.
The recommendation is to approve it. They thought that fitting a commercial along Highway 30 and the Colton Road is consistent with planning and then there will be residential more to the east and north.
Make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance seven sixty seven, request to rezone parcel one five nine nine four.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we will vote. Mattson.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Parachek.
Yes.
Shilling.
Yes.
All right.
What's a rubric? Where'd that come from? Just out of curiosity.
The previous rubric was the original owner of that piece of property.
Okay.
Sold it to Robert Pearson and just a little homage to where it came from.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Ray, Ray Inberness.
Okay. Did they own both sides of the other park too?
Yeah.
Well, that's good. Well, it's good to see you guys.
Forever residence.
Yeah. Yeah.
For the whole name.
Yep. Well, good to see you guys moving forward with that, Jeff. That's really a great, great addition. All right. Now we go down to second reading of ordinance seven sixty four. This is the request to rezone parcel two three six eight two and eight zero eight seven two to residential high density. First reading was approved a couple of weeks ago. You have to have two readings of all these ordinances. Anyone?
As presented, I see no reason to not move to approve this rezone. Motion to approve ordinance seven sixty four. Rezone parcels two three eight six two and eight zero eight seven two.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a quick question here. I'm sorry, I'm scrolling. My, my, my computer is being extremely slow. I think there's a couple people that probably want to talk on this.
Yeah. Yep. I know we have one.
So write this. So with, do they talk during discussion or?
Well, you'd be better deformed to talk during discussion than after.
Yeah, I guess, just so you guys are clear. Because I know, I think there's for sure two of you that want to talk before we make a vote, so. I don't, I don't want things to move so fast that you forget.
I was going to forget.
Tell us who you are, ma'am, so they can get it in the minutes.
I'm Kristen Trana. I live at two O'Waitlet's for Mona Street. I have a few points to share with you today. I brought photos of this combination of my property and then, oops, this one's for you too. And Connor, who lives next door. Connor and Danielle.
And the pictures are of?
Drainage issues that we are currently having.
But see, ma'am.
That's the problem.
That's the problem. We're, we have to vote first on the rezone. The drainings and those issues come about.
I have commented that would apply to that though.
Okay.
Because currently the south parcel is zoned as natural resource conservation.
Correct.
So there is no development on it. And as it stands that way, it is able to absorb rainfall, precipitation, those sorts of things. Any sort of development, no matter how it goes, is going to cause less surface area to be available for absorption of precipitation. So I wanted to provide these photos to show that this is already a concern and then it, no matter how they develop it, if there's going to be any sort of asphalt, there's going to be buildings on that property, it is going to affect the drainage in a negative, in a negative way. So no matter how it would be developed.
How do you know that?
You're right. I don't.
Okay.
But.
I didn't know if you were.
No, I don't have, I'm not that, but it's, it would be more of a common sense type thing.
Is your house the gray house?
Is it this one right here? Just out of curiosity.
Yes.
The dark or the dark?
This looks like it's in your lap.
Yes. But.
Because I walked on that. I mean, I want to stay, you know, I want to stay within the confines of.
Zoning.
Of, of zoning. And that's what makes this difficult. I've had conversations. But also, I mean, if the mayor wants to slap me down, he can, right? I mean, I'm okay if I need to be slapped down with this. Not, not physically, but. You know, like, for example, we just rezoned Jeff Zacharias's development up there where, you know, it's like rezoning something from an ag area or is not uncommon, right? And I think, so like, if we stick in the confines of just rezoning, right? Because I, but I also understand it's hard to kind of like get outside of, well, what happens next, right? That's to be determined, right, with what that landowner, right, with that, with what that landowner, landowner wants to do. But if we stay in the confines of the zoning, like, you know, we have rezoned just tonight, potentially, just in one night. Actually, there's three rezoning. Am I reading this right? There's potential three rezoning. So like, we rezon some all the time, okay? So I, I want to stay within the confines of that. And to add on to this, and I, you know, I'm not an engineer. I know that our engineers do their best, but also, and I think Cindy made a good comment at the last meeting, it's like, what happens if something did go there? What happens if it made it? Like, we don't know. Like, that's the reality. We just, we don't know.
Sure.
Right? So I just wanted to throw, kind of throw that in. On the zoning issue, it's really common for us to rezone property all the time.
Sure.
Yep.
What, what if the development actually resolved your drainage issue?
I was going to say.
Be a very pleasant surprise.
The road is to the.
I've seen that happen too.
Back of your yard is where the, this is not a plan. I mean, there's no plan.
Right.
But just in the muck, that's where the road would actually go.
Um, I have a few other points too.
Sure.
So I contacted the county highway department and while they would work with Hartford, I want to point out that as Western Avenue currently stands and their access policy, if adding access to this would go outside of their normal policy, which we've had discussion about how the reason why they have that policy is for safety reasons and that will be a concern. A conversation that I had with some people who are part of the fire department is that not having two accesses into that area is a fire egress concern as well. And there's not going to be another way, which then brings me to my third, or third comment on this was that I came and did some research on zoning minutes from when this was originally. There we go. And from when things were originally zoned. So I believe, based on the timing, December 14th, 1998, I apologize. I was not living in Hartford at that time, so I don't know for sure. But there's a motion by Griffith and second by Davis. I'm going to leave out some stuff. But it's the property owned by Lilian Schrendenthaler, which is, I believe, the parent, the mother of the current owner of the land. If not, it is a relative. The, the, the land has passed hands back and forth between that last name. To allow the property to remain zone ag with stipulation, and it was carried with a yes vote by all. The applicant's administrator for estate stated that the property may become a park and the property is landlocked. And then motion by Griffith and second by Muntz to recommend granting an amendment to the Robert Hofer property, which that is the southern parcel that has now been sold to the, the Schrendenthalers. And that was also carried with a yes vote. And that was also noted in the minutes that the property is landlocked and may become a park playground. So in the past, the current, the previous owners, when this was originally zoned, when, when the neighborhoods were developed, it was intended that that would stay undeveloped. Now, I know that things change hands, but I wanted to give some history on that. And then my final point is, so I've lived in my house for about a year and a half, almost two years now. And I have approached the Realtor to request from the landowners to purchase them of the land. And that was not, they wouldn't even offer me a price to even look at that. And I know I am not the only one on my street. Now, I know, I've, I've worked for the county commission and I've worked for different areas and have been in front of boards before. And I know that they would say, if you like your view and you don't want to change, buy it. Well, I try. And so have a lot, I mean, probably everybody on our street, we have tried to purchase the parcels behind us and they wouldn't even entertain it. So I just wanted to pass those things along. And I would say that that offer would still stand. I would love to be able to buy the land behind my home and expand my backyard into that.
You understand, we can't tell people what they can or can't do.
I know, but I wanted that to go in the public record.
Yeah, I get it. I get it.
Because I know in the back of your mind, you're saying, well, what are these people going to do with this land if we don't rezone it? Well, there are people on the street that would happily buy it and then just incorporate it into our class and.
Well, you understand, if we or don't, if we rezone it, there's a lot of steps that are going to take place before this gets to the point where they're building, digging ground and building stuff.
Yep. But I also know that if you rezone it to high density residential, it could be anything. It doesn't necessarily be that plan. It could be very high density. It could be apartments. So I'm just, there's a lot of ups in the airs. And so it's things that we have to think about all of the grand scheme.
Again, that plan would have to be approved by planning and zoning before it would.
I gotta, how did you come across minutes from 1998?
Wow.
That's amazing.
I came, I took the day off to be here to look through the minutes. This is incredibly important to me.
I get it.
Thank you for doing that.
I totally get it. I live, I live in your ward, okay? I get it. I've, I was out there with Daryl. I mean, I'm, you know, it's, I get it. If I lived there, I'll tell you right now, I'd be up doing exactly what you're doing, right? And that's, yeah.
All right. Anyone got any questions? Is there anybody else from that neighborhood that wants to?
Thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate it.
Give it up.
Thank you.
Cooper Trixie, live in Fort Leaven, North Oaks, South End, East End of that, or somewhere. I mean, I just kind of wondered what you guys' reason is for voting, assuming yes, possibly again the second time. Kind of your rationale behind it, because what you kind of explained was just that you do it all the time. We rezon things all the time. Doesn't necessarily give all the insight, so it's kind of just wondering where everyone's going to just do it on the issues, so their rationale and vote.
Presidential area. So we are, we still need it in what I think conforms with the rest of the neighborhood. There are a lot of design standards that have to be met after this is done, when it goes, you know, to be planted or used. That talk about setbacks and streets and all of the things that they have to meet that I think could potentially address some of the concern. But I, I kind of also respect, I mean, landowners do have the ability and should have the ability to use their property as they see fit. And I think when we get to the other steps of it, that's when it's decided if the use is appropriate. Like, they just can't do anything. But as far as the rezoning, I feel like I don't have a reason to tell the property owner it can't be rezoned.
And I think just to add on to that group, you know, once again, we've had good discussions. And I think we do rezone things and I think we try and do things that fit into, like, for example, like, we wouldn't make that light industrial, right? Just, you know, so, so that's, you know, try and zoning, try and, we try and rezone things that are going to make sense. You know, sometimes mistakes are made. I think you can go to a lot of small towns. You're like, why is, you know, why is there a house right next to the farmer's elevator, right? You know, whatever the case is, right? And then I think the, the second thing is too, is to Cindy's point, which private property, it's their property or supposedly the people that are buying it and. So I, I wanted to exposit on, on, on your question because I think it's a good question. Well, because I also don't want to think, well, we just rezone things all the time and that's just what we do. Well, there is thought put into it, right? So very good question and appreciate you coming up, yep.
I can tell you for myself, I'm not a person who just does what I'm told. I, I kind of up the system and I've known for that. I like to know why people feel passionate about things. I appreciate that you guys are here. I live in the middle of old Hartford, just on Muntz. I, I can appreciate wanting to buy property to either make it better or to have it stay the same. I love, I have made projections out and offers to buy property in our neighborhood because I would like it different. But I can't force people to do what they want to with their property. We can make decisions as to what goes in there and what fits in that neighborhood. But as far as rezoning it, it's such a beginning step that there's zero harm to me rezoning an area and potentially seeing what a property owner has in mind for that area. In the big scheme of things, it could actually benefit you. You don't know. It's just rezoning it. This isn't, oh, this is what's going in there. It's just rezoning it for the possibility of something. We don't know what the economy says and plays and does. It could be rezoned and it could sit for another 10 years. We don't know. So that's why I vote the way I do.
So a question I have on that is, I know that this is the, the first step. It's very, you know, very beginning. It's a whole spiel about that. There isn't a second portion where we, I guess, as a community and as a community, the neighborhood, get to vote on anything that wants to do with it. But as long as it goes with standards and someone wants to put whatever they want to put in there and it fits the zoning, we don't get an opportunity to vote on it.
When the, when the plans come to planning and zoning, that's when you guys get your next, oh yeah, you get a few more shots of this.
It depends on what they put in.
Yes.
If they can meet our standards and the permitted use, then as long as they meet all our standards, all our drainage standards, all our building standards.
For sure.
As long as they follow them, they can. But if it's something that requires a conditional use, like a multifamily or whatnot.
Right.
That does need a public hearing through.
Correct.
Yeah. Everybody can, anybody can have input on it. So it just depends on what they come forward with.
And I just, I guess I want to address with the, I guess, saying not seeing any harm with voting to rezone it whichever way. I think that it doesn't quite say, yeah, they're going to put this many houses or do this exact thing with the lot. But it is pulling it out of, especially that south portion, out of conservation. So that is saying that you can develop it. You can put something there. So it is, I, and I think that the rezoning of that does open that up. So there is the harm of saying, we are allowing some development. Maybe not exactly saying one house, two houses, eight houses, but we're saying that, yes, we should develop it that way.
And my viewpoint in regards to there's no harm in it is to that, you know, they own the property. And if I owned property and I wanted to develop it, I should have that right. I should have that opportunity to be able to, if it follows along the state guidelines as to what is in that area. And, and the property owners are following all the steps to do so.
I guess. I'm going to chime in at that point because they're not the property owners. And so as I sit here and I look at this request, Jeff Zacharias is here for Windsor Group. He's a property owner. This applicant isn't the property owner. And where does the policy come that?
It was signed by the property owner.
It was signed by the property. Okay.
If you look at the application, because we do require the property owner to sign it.
Recommendation, yeah.
Obviously, they live out of state.
Right.
And a quick comment on that. It does say, I guess, in the requirements for that permit that was put in that there needs to be for the property owner to have, it was their name, address, phone number. And I, at least from what was posted online about the minutes and the information packet, I didn't see anything listed about that. I saw their name, I think signed it. But at least that portion wasn't adhered to. I don't know.
They give that administratively to us, to our office. We don't have to publish that, I guess, if you say. Everybody wants their. Yeah. That's just administratively in the office.
But I guess, yeah, that isn't necessarily telling the property owner what to do with, what they can and can't. These are the prospective buyers. The property owner isn't, is just looking to sell the ground. The people who are the prospective buyers are wanting to do something else with it. So if there's at least a little more of a bit of passion behind it of not trying to tell someone what to with their ground, but.
But it's also contingent upon the, the current property owner's making the sale is what, you know, and that's between the buyer and seller, right?
And it's contingent upon the rezone.
Right. And that's, but that's their business, right? Like, right? I mean, that's. I agree. I agree.
It is. But the rezoning, I think, is how we go, the neighborhood business or, you know, public business.
Yeah.
But at least saying, here's what.
Yep.
As of right now, the ground can't be developed, at least on that south parcel.
Yep.
And the north parcel realistically, because it's covered mature trees, there's not much developing.
Right.
Affordable developing to, to kind of go on there. So, but, you know, rezoning it now says, okay, if someone wants to buy it, including prospective buyers, now we can because we're letting it be developed. And that's kind of, this is the starting point of, should this be developed or not? That's kind of what we're asking you to vote against, is to say, we prefer that this stays undeveloped for all the reasons you've heard. I'm not going to, you know, repeat all of that. I can hear all of our spiel on that.
All right. Questions for Cooper or anybody else from that neighborhood that wants to speak? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing else? We have a motion and a second was made? Any other discussion from the council?
Who seconded? Just, we did, did we get a second before the, they came up?
Yeah, Cindy did, I believe. Hearing no further discussion, we'll vote. Mattson.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Parachek.
Yes.
Shilling.
Yes.
All right. Thank you guys for your input.
Appreciate it.
Do you want your pictures, ma'am?
No, I printed them for you guys.
Okay. All right. Second reading now, or the second reading of ordinance seven six five, request to zone parcel nine three three seven two to Light Industrial.
Make a motion to approve ordinance seven sixty five, request to zone parcel nine three three seven two to Light Industrial.
Second. Any discussion?
Hearing none will vote. Shilling.
Yes.
Parachek.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
All right. And the last one is second reading of ordinance seven six six. This is our 2026 appropriations or budget, if you want to call it that.
Motion to approve second reading of ordinance seven sixty six.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mattson.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Parachek.
Yes.
Shilling.
Yes.
All right. Down to reports. First up, fire department report. Chief Schumacher sent his report in. It's in your packet.
It was a big public safety day.
Yeah.
It was busier than, than the other years I've been. So, very nice.
That's awesome. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Craig and your group for getting stuff marked off or. All right, hold on. My computer is just slower than ever living. Golly. Maybe it's because there's too many pages in here.
It's long.
Oh, yeah. We'll have to go to that. Okay. Next up, building inspector report. Mr. Kyle Christensen. Oh, there he is.
I leave my code enforcement report and Paul's building report in your packets. If you have any questions.
So is the grass stuff slowed down now that has dried up a little bit?
Yeah, a little bit of heat wave we got, kind of slowed down.
Anybody got any questions for Kyle? Appreciate your report. Thank you for coming. All right. We'll go to, as I like to call it, the most exciting part of the evening. Engineers report.
Action, because we got a crowd tonight, man.
You got a crowd. All right, Michael, we'll let you start.
Good evening, Councilman Jones. Project updates on the water rack facility, that one is, is kind of moving into the closeout phase. Punch walk is planned for later this week. Aramod, the vendor will be on site to continue some of their commissioning on some of their components as well. And the driven cutting has been, date has been set from 10:30, 10:30.
10:30, yep.
Look for, look for an invite coming in the next, just next week or so for that. Moving on to Western Avenue, as you likely have noticed, base three has started. So working on the west half of the county trail intersection, going well. Truthfully, a lot of the warmer, drier weather has, has been helpful. Utility installation is complete and just waiting on some of the storm boxes, which they were actually able to start today, a little ahead of when they were anticipating. Contractors estimating about three weeks on that phase, three years remaining, that is on that phase, and then we'll start on the east half. So going well, we're going to close the end of that one as well. Swenson Park had a pre-construction meeting with the contractor last week and they began moving earth there yesterday. That's anticipated to take about two weeks pending any other weather forecast this week. Do have that safety fence up there just with practicing some of the, the ball fields and kids, so staying on top of that. And having the plans that work shall be done by 5:00 PM, just so there's not, not machinery dust being generated while practices are, are being drawn going. We will discuss the Kelly Avenue drainage study after the report. Citywide water model, model calibration is underway and is anticipated to be completed end of this week. And then following the completion of that, calibration of that, a draft report is anticipated mid-October. Last up is the Mickelson Road Shared Use Path. That's the trail from Patrick Avenue to Turtle Creek Drive. We're working with the state to finalize that scope of work. Once complete, we'll be able to actually go and field conserve data and design. So we anticipate designing back after this year and then the spring starting for construction. As I answer the report, happy to answer any questions.
Will we do this since we have the plans ready? I'm always waiting.
Yeah, welcome.
When does the wastewater treatment facility get a physical address?
It, it has an address on it that we've been working on for supplying, supplies coming and whatnot. We've worked on coming, we have a temporary one. Actually, we were just talking about it today about getting a sign up there, but we want to confirm that's the address that's going to keep. There's no city street there, so it'll probably keep that rural address still.
It's just, it's not listed in many GIS yet, so I'm just curious if it is.
What is it?
Something, something.
Somewhere across the Comcast, I don't know if that's, Comcast, does that work?
466th?
Yeah.
There you go.
26077.
Roller coaster road.
Yeah, yeah, roller coaster road. There are people that have lived here.
Upper section of roller coaster and Highway 38, right?
Yeah, we were just talking today about having to get those signed up there.
Good. I mean, that's why you can't send the calendar, right? Because nobody's going to know exactly where you go.
All right, anybody got any questions for Michael before we move on to the Kelly Avenue portion of the evening? All right, we're going to turn it over to Justin with ISG. What I think we'll do is we'll have Justin go through, make his presentation, open it up for anything that you guys want to talk about. And really, I'm telling you, we're not going to make a decision tonight. We wanted to have you guys come, talk about this, have Justin put on the presentation so everybody knew what we were talking about. We're not going to start spending your money yet.
Well, you scared me for it.
Yeah. Well, because you're, you're the first one. We're going to go to your place first.
Just a note, first of all, we're going to be a level joint presentation.
Oh, Michael's in involved?
Michael's.
Even better.
I'll tell you what, the camera loves Michael, I tell you.
Exactly.
Been shooting videos with him, the camera loves him.
You better, you better watch out, so.
Yeah.
There's a map that Michael scanned out, but we also have everything up on the screen there too. There's going to be a lot of details in this map that are going to be a little nuanced. A lot of that is with the model, so I'm going to try to give you guys some. I love a little view of what we're seeing and what we've got going on. So quick outline of the presentation, we're going to first talk about the project needs, our existing condition review, look at some of the alternatives that we reviewed, and then have some comparison of the results. So it's going to be pretty quick, it's what we're going to go over and try to give guys a little breath. So when we look at this project need and how the study may come out, this project has been identified on the capital improvement plan for quite a while. So last spring, we started engaging with the city board, understand what we wanted for this project and what this project would look like. Understanding there was a drainage concern with the street section and some of the alternatives needed to be analyzed further. Instead of just jumping into final design, we decided to take a step back and really focus on the drainage, understand what our solutions are to address this, and then get consensus and move forward. So it's really helping pair what our solutions are with our budget and what we can do to move forward. So that's going to help you about. It's why we're here today. I see a lot of you guys with the report and looking at some of those maps already. So prior to the start of this project, we sent out letters to all the residents along there, just asking for some historical photos or information or data from what you guys were seeing. That was really to help us get a base understanding of what you guys see compared with what we see to make sure that model is directionally accurate. There's going to be some nuances with the model. We can go down random holes if you want, but essentially we look at a 24-hour storm and the rainfall that happens within that event. Now, every rainfall event that we get isn't a perfect model of storm, but that's where we want to check and do some of that. Generally, a model is going to be a little bit more conservative unless we have some of those rainfall events that we saw last June with those very large rainfall events that come back to back. When we look at stormwater design within a city, we look at a minor storm and a major storm. That minor storm is generally a five-year rainfall event, and then the major storm is generally a 100-year event. Now, there's a lot of nuance on the 100-year storm, may not be what it used to be, but for this scope of services, we look at the 10-year storm for the minor, which is a 24-hour rainfall event that had a jump down of just over three inches. And that 100-year rainfall event is 5.19 inches, so about six inches of rainfall. So hypothetically speaking, wake up at 8:00 in the morning and it's raining, check your drainage the next day and there's six inches, that's 100-year rainfall event. What we wanted to do, when we looked at that drainage area too, it's approximately a six-acre watershed. So when we look at Kelly Avenue as a whole, it is really combined just within your guys' this area. If you're not getting too much drainage, call it from the north, the park area that comes into Kelly Avenue. There is a benefit to that because it helps analyze solutions right in your guys' this area. Once you start to do those larger drainage basins, it really makes it more difficult to resolve solutions because there's a trickle down effect along that watershed. This development was built prior to current city standards, obviously, but with the standards there was a rule section, call it shallow ditches and not really any culverts. So when we talked about some of the drainage earlier tonight, there's a lot more different standards to help redo some of this localized flooding and stuff that we saw within our model conditions. So when we also looked at it, there's kind of those undefined drainage patterns, right? So that's where we're seeing a lot of that on water cooling and driveways, just kind of sitting in that right-of-way area, going through some of those backyards. Once we get a little further to the southeast, it gets more defined and it goes out towards Bus Barn and out around. This was also brought up and it, you know, it's confirmed, that Bus Barn kind of does sit on an island, so there is water that ponds on the left side of the Bus Barn or call it the east side of the development there as well. This is just kind of noting where we had some of those photos provided to us, really focused on that east side, and you'll see that in some of other model results as well. Here are some just pictures that were received. This is that Bus Barn area showing some of that water that's ponded in there, as well as some of the drainage in those driveways. That's, that's one of the major concerns that I seen here, and this is what I'd call localized flooding. That water just doesn't have anywhere to go. There's no defined path. A typical curving gutter, street section with storm sewer that stays within that curving gutter and gets down and out. Same thing there. So this is really what our model produced for that 10-year event. Looking at that drainage, we call this an inundation map, so you can generally see, and if you guys are good, I might just walk and talk here, we'll get interactive. When we look at the Kelly Avenue drainage basin, all that water comes down through these backyards or, or through the roadway, hits the seaside pretty heavy. As we saw in some of those pictures, comes down through the southeast corner, the ponding along the bus barn that we see, which is kind of a double effect with that, with the drainage that comes down and not through Kelly Avenue but the east, and that causes some of the backup in there. We saw that both on the 10-year and 100-year event, that was one thing that was really noticed by all of you guys in response to us and a lot of the information that we heard. Looking at the 100-year event too, same drainage patterns, you just start to see that ponding amplified. So as more water comes in, doesn't have anywhere to hold, it starts back up into Kelly Avenue, and it just takes longer to get that water out of there. Like, I know that this is just looking at one storm that's in the 24-hour period. If you guys had any other of those examples, like back in June where you have some of those double events, just think that there's a damp line. That water needs somewhere to go out. If it doesn't, it's going to sit there and pond up. Once we looked at that 10 and 100-year model based on some of those photos, we felt pretty comfortable that this model was a good representation of what was actually happening, happening in place, some conservativeness in some areas, but that's where we felt comfortable looking forward with, looking at what were those solutions we could implement to help alleviate some of the drainage issues that we were seeing. So with that, I'll let Michael take us through. We looked at three different alternates. There was a lot of other considerations that we can go into, but take her way, Michael.
Yeah, just to note, as part of the report, we evaluated three different alternates. Did varying levels of effectiveness and cost to, to determine their impacts and benefits to these storm, stormwater issues. The first alternate we have is a full reconstruction of Kelly Avenue from Van de Mar to Second Street. What a full reconstruction entails is, is complete removal of the roadway, replacement of the utilities, so the sanitary sewer, the water, and then the inclusion of storm sewer, curving gutter, and sidewalk and curbage. Typically, when you're doing the full roadway reconstruction, you don't want to pave the road and then have to come back and do the utilities, you know, five or 10 years later. That's just, that's just a waste of, of city funds, so.
Michael, what are, what's the age of the utilities under the road?
Where they put them.
Probably the late 70s or early 80s.
So they're, they're approaching 45 years old.
45, not, not 1990? Nothing was installed in 1990?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, okay.
Can I add to that? I think it was 1985 because I was supposed to be at track practice and I growled at them. Procheck, remember that.
1985, okay, all right.
Man, that's good, Jeff.
I ran extra that night.
Yeah, yeah.
You need historians.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, very good, thank you.
So really, the goal of, of the full reconstruction and one of the things we would target would be, you know, slightly lowering that roadway to really help that water, once it gets into the right-of-way, capture and stay there. So.
Hold on, Michael, I want to, so were all the houses there and then Jeff or was?
No, no, no.
Okay.
It ended before the curve, before the, before the bend was in there, actually.
Okay, so in 85, it stopped. Was it just north Kelly?
I'm not sure what.
Basically, at the curve, it stopped.
Teacher, teacher wrote it, I guess.
Teacher wrote it, yeah.
So the north part of Kelly's got the clay sewer in there yet, so that would have put in probably a few years earlier.
Okay.
Before they switch over to PVCs.
Okay, and then at the curve, Craig and down, is that?
Yeah, so it's actually about where that path is at, the school crossing, in that area there, about where the plate pipe ends, there's a east bit that goes through there back to the, the sewer heads it out to the north and then it jumps to the west out of east bit and brings it over to Van De Mar.
Okay.
Great. Please bring a white chart, show us on the map, will you, somebody?
Yeah, I was trying to with the mouse here.
Is that the walkway right there?
Yeah, the walkway is here, it jumps over, manual, Craig referencing is here, and then that's where she's here, and then the existing sewer to the south of that basically picks up here and goes south and then to the east.
Okay.
So I missed it, but the clay is north of the walkway?
Yes.
Okay, good.
All right, go ahead.
So what we have here, this is the second map in the handout, I gave you what you had for 100-year, but this is just a 10-year. And what it is is the red colors, orange colors are the proposed improvements, whereas the, is the conditions to help show some of that improvement. So really, what you can see here is, is a lot of the inundation in the street stays within the street. So that's being captured by the series of pinless here, and then that is being piped all the way to Turtle Creek, so vast majority, or actually all of the water in 10-year is being piped directly to Turtle Creek. There's, there's nothing moving the right-of-way that would commonly reduce the water. Anything that lands obviously on the lots would still continue those drainage paths because I've, you know, house grading and around houses, you'd like to stay in the street, but the volume of water between the houses would be significantly reduced. Also, 100-year, Justin, and similarly, as you can see, the increase of flooding here, one thing to still note is it's really dependent on the right-of-way. There's only a slight, slight river of overflow that is actually making a vast of bus lines that you can see, the reduction in volume of water, just with the reduction in the area that is flooding through here. With storm sewer designed, typically it's not practical, practical or cost-effective to design that on 100-year events. So storm sewers are typically designed to be, to the minor events, in this case, for the 10-year storm, and then just make sure you have features in place, accommodations for emergency overflows for those, those significant events. So like, like I said, significant reduction of, outside of the right-of-way.
One of the big aspects on this concept, which sees reduction in some of the stormwater and flooding, is providing a storm sewer outlet, generally in this area, that would go from Kelly all the way to Turtle Creek. So it's taking that water, keeping it within the right-of-way, giving it a safe conveyance to Turtle Creek.
But topographically, is the curve the lowest spot of the property?
The curve is the lowest spot, and that's where you see that drainage that comes over there.
Correct.
The reason on putting it here, that can be explored further down the road in final design, is understanding some of the space between the houses right now. So we were looking strictly on an engineering perspective and some of that feasibility to make sure we had proof of concept and that this would be feasible to get outlet. The further we keep down here to run this down here and then over, you're starting to lengthen your storm sewer pipe length with that aspect too. So when we look at the storm sewer though, maybe they're going all the way down to Turtle Creek, looking at that elevation, it's going to be all underground and go up to Kelly. The difference in elevation between this point right up here and where we're collecting everything down there is pretty minor, and we're still able to get gravity flow that essentially goes to the west and then to the south. There's the, so.
We did, we did a conveyway, you know, if we could shut off the water to Van De Mar and not have the, the main of the sag there, that just wasn't feasible to try to recreate. So it'd be atrocious. And we did, you know, about, if you were short, just outlet to everyone, once again, just with the existing elevations where we feel, based on our analysis of the proposed route would be, just thought it was not feasible to outlet these storm sewer to everyone, which is why we're taking it all the way to the creek.
They made the blur.
I, Justin, I want to ask a question. So where you got that pipe, that's the place we looked the day we were out there driving around. And I recall when we looked at the two coming off the curve or coming off there, it was, I hate to call it less disruption, but it appeared there'd be less disruption if we went straight, right?
Correct.
Than go the other way. Because we looked at that, the only problem, I don't know who, whose those places are, I think there's four big trees right in there. That's the problem. I mean, there's going to be some trees removal where that green, if that plan is what we decide, where that green pipe runs through, there's four big trees right there, if I remember right.
Yep.
What kind of trees are they?
I don't know that they're emerald ash, or, I don't know that they're ash. Man, that could be a, that could be a win-win.
Yeah, I mean, if they were.
I mean, sometimes we got to get a win-win. Okay, sorry.
One thing I did want to note with the ponding by the bus bar, I always think that's a big concern for a few of you, so when we ran up 100-year model, we did also see like 100-year flood conditions in Turtle Creek, as well as seeing the water jump street, that's how we're going to get out of this. One thing we found is Turtle Creek rises so much in this area, so it actually has some backwater effects where the water kind of starts pushing up into here, and similarly, you know, there's that slight channel through here on the west side of the parking lot here, it kind of fizzles out and then water, you can see, just starts spreading. So, some of the issues here are less from Kelly Avenue and more just elevations, you know, our understanding has just noted this, this watering, the green rise, just based on the elevations, so I just wanted to note that to the crowd. And then, here are some of the numbers, however, why the benefit for alternate one, so you can see flow east of the right way, basically, anything going from the streets that can be houses on the east and the south side, in 10-year has been completely reduced, and in 100-years, being significantly more reduced, down just 0.8 DFS at its peak. Similarly, the flooded area east of the right way, it's significantly reduced to 10 and 100-year, and then our estimate for the full reconstruction of the roadway is $2.2 million in contingent design.
I see you put it in there, really small numbers, so we're like...
Yeah, it's really a small...
Way to undersell that.
Two point two, when you add two commas, it makes it...
Yeah, yeah, it looks a lot smaller when you only put two numbers up there, yeah, thanks.
So, second alternate we looked at, similar to the first, but in a slightly reduced scope, so this would be a full reconstruction of Kelly Avenue, but for only a 400-foot section, really just where this water starts to stray from the right way. So here, 100 itself, Kelly Avenue to 112 Kelly Avenue, that proposed section, curb gutter, water sanitary storm, would be done mainly to collect that runoff that runs down there, age of the stormless, and then the same as the previous concept, outlet to Turtle Creek. This one would not include sidewalk, just because, as it is only a 400-foot stretch, that is not ordered by sidewalk, it would be a walk with nowhere to go. So, it was evaluated, but it was something that...
Can we go back to that? So that doesn't show, we started that in the middle of the road?
Yes. So, maybe to provide a little additional context, when we look at some of this alternative analysis and we understand, call it the problem area within this roadway section is down there on the corner, right? So we look at complete reconstruction, then we're going to look at something way down here, and how do we fit in the middle on there on some of the forward solutions and aspects when we understand the core root of what the concern is on this aspect, right? So to provide to you guys, this is one of those alternates that's kind of in the middle, it solves the storm water solution, but there's other aspects with this that are missing.
Like a junky road.
Well...
Back to elevation, it drops 36 inches there. I mean, from the start of that down, so those, those portions on Kelly are...
So we can change the options.
This is one that we identified.
Yes.
But we're only a few months of this project, we still have oddy in the driveways.
Yeah, right.
And this solution doesn't resolve, doesn't deal with the clay pipe sewer, doesn't deal with anything.
Yeah.
Doesn't deal with what's under the problem.
That's correct. What it does provide, is a key element to this, is a portion to get into the end-all-be-all solution, right? When we look at that $2.2 million and understand that's a large project cost, understand that the benefits of getting that drainage away from Kelly Avenue down to Turtle Creek, first going to the bus barn, it is providing some of that solution, collecting that area in the south, getting it down to there.
And just to be clear, if there's assessments for curb and gutter, if that would be the choice, residents pay the same assessment, whether we spend $100,000 or $2.2 million? The assessments are flat for you.
Whether we try to do a Band-Aid, or whether we try to do right?
Yeah, unfortunately, that's the... But we'll dive into the results here and see why we analyzed this, because it does, does prove something else.
So, similar to the last one, you can see a lot of capture within the roadway, but, I mean, in existing conditions, you see there's, there's a lot of water that kind of falls in the backyards up here on the west side, and the meanders across the street, and then it does make it into these yards and past, so. Reduction in the flooded area for those that are on the south side, as Justin already guessed, further up the street, there's still be some, some ponding driveways, some uncontrolled flow, but for the, for the problem areas where we really heard a lot of water, basements, water garages, those, those, this solution does provide, this alternate does provide a solution to those problems. So, similarly, 100-year, very similar results. One thing to note, and I think on the next slide, Justin, the water leaving right away, even in 100-year, in the solution, it is 100% captured within the reconstructed area, all of the water receiving right away is north of the improvements.
That still looks like a lot of water, it's still...
There's, there's not a whole lot of that that wants to get to that certain point down there in the north, so it's understanding where that return on investment is, we're helping down on that southeast corner, pull on some of that drainage out of that area between that bus barn, but there is still some of that drainage that does get in those driveways on the east side for those couple properties.
And I will note that, that red color that doesn't appear, that is, that begins at a tenth of a foot of inundation, that doesn't necessarily indicate water is ponding and sitting there, it just means at some point in the, in the model, there's a tenth of a foot of water moving across that, that piece of the surface. So it could be flowing, it could be sitting there, typically, in those driveways there, in the front yards, it's flattered, so as water gets there, it's going to spread out, which makes it appear a little bit more impactful than it may be. So, as I noted, flow east of the right way, that 8.2, that 14.8 DFS, that is all north of the, of the reconstructed area. We did have, we did verify that, through the reconstruction section, there's, there's a little bit of flooding where there's that curb gutter. Flooded area did not see as high of a benefit, but did see a, you know, reduction of 40% to 30% for 100-year, also unexpectedly, and then the opinion of the problem cost for this section of roadway is $2,000. The third alternate that we evaluated, was a real, trying to be as cost-effective as possible, still mainly controlling the storm water. This one includes grading ditches along the east side of the road for a very similar stretch of roadway, about 400 feet, culverts under driveways, they're really just, once that water, you know, meanders across, or just channel it, it gets somewhat overshot and cause damage to property. So, as I noted, we're getting down here, the curb, that water's coming east, and we're outletting between these two houses as it is the actual low point currently, and by the recent patch of the solution.
I like to say this alternate is really kind of tailoring towards what that roadway wants to be currently, right? That rural section with driveways, ditches, culverts, and improving that. So again, when we talk about kind of here to there, it's understanding where a little bit more over there, it doesn't adhere to current design standards, but it's going to take care of that localized flooding like those roadways.
Excuse me, I thought you were done. So, you guys thought about the spring when you got the heavy snow and the road on, the ditches are going to dam up, or you're going to, where's that water going to go then?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely, that's, that's, that's a great aspect, and that's ultimately why this recommendation wasn't necessarily recommended, right? We wanted to analyze it, we wanted to see what it would do, looking at those conditions, call it within the spring to the fall when we have normal conditions, there are aspects like that with the snow, or sometimes in the fall when we get some of those, those challenges. In an area like this, with the rural drainage section, with ditches and culverts, generally, see that snow sit in those ditches for a while, right? That's a colder spot, that's going to get as much sunlight, you do have a chance to still have some of that localized flooding until everything gets melted and pushed out there.
Could actually make the flooding worse.
Put culverts underneath?
With the ditches.
Or ditch? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was just to be curious, I wish there was like a 3D model of this to see what that would even look, I can't even visualize that in my mind of what that would look like.
Be a good ramp for them to jump their bikes and stuff. I mean, it's got a lot of that, and, it's got some, you know, it's a bike park.
Oh, okay.
Part T before we rebuild in the ditch.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, basically. Alright.
So, similarly, as you can see, those ditches do capture, capture the water conveyed to the outlet here, that does kind of increase flooding slightly in this area, just because we're allowing the water to get there a little bit quicker, it takes a little bit more to get ousted. You know, these, pretty excited as far as if you wanted to, but these, you know, where the uncontrollables, if they didn't have the ditches, it does, one thing to note is, since we're not piping it to Turtle Creek, that water is still all going to the bus barn area, and it still doesn't fall out there between those houses. So that's just one thing to keep in mind, we're not reducing the amount of water between houses, we're just helping it flow a little more channel, trying to control whatever more children is out of the water factor.
I think I asked you this question, Justin, when we were out driving around that day, what if there was a storm sewer right there by the bus barn that headed, headed south toward Turtle Creek?
Right there?
Yep.
And then go on?
Yep.
I mean, you can definitely look at that, I think, understand that's where some of those property lines are.
Right.
So when we were looking at this project, was looking at the scope of the eye of the...
I understand, I understand that'd be a project, yeah.
With that, we would want to definitely do, understanding all the drainage that's coming from the north down through there, just do some alternative analysis to make sure we're not having those negative impacts downstream too, right? We're talking about getting water to Turtle Creek by the drainage area, within our analysis, we analyze that.
Yeah.
Sometimes when you push too much, too fast, you're going to see some of those impacts there.
I get it, I just, because the day we were down there looking, I think, I'm not an engineer, and I said, why wasn't there a, why wasn't there a storm sewer, or storm inlet? Put there.
Yeah, somewhere in there and get their, their...
Forty years ago, or whenever they built the school. It just made me wonder, that maybe could have, over the years, made a difference. I don't, maybe not, I don't know.
My opinion, your alternative three would just going to cause you a lot more disaster if you were heading down the road.
Having that there?
Alternative three, because you're going to have, either you have to have dips in the old driveways to get the water to go.
Oh, yeah.
You're going to have culverts that are about this big.
Oh, yeah.
You're plucked, be solid, you're going to have nothing to mess with.
Yeah, I know.
If you had that in the past, so...
Yeah.
Then who keeps the new property owner from filling in the ditch?
Yeah, that resolves that.
You know, that would be a short memory.
Yeah. Alright.
Your comment about, I applied to the bus barn, so yes, you can provide it back there to get it to the creek, you just remember that creek, and you just have to come back.
Oh, exactly, I get it, yeah.
So, are we going to have that same problem on the storm sewer that'd be put up half-block? Are you going to have it back up, push the water back up?
Well, this is, this area is significantly flooded in the street, so there'd be, it would take a lot more to create to pack up all the way to the, into Kelly Avenue.
Just for my clarification, as the water hits the bus barn, it comes around to the north and then circles around that southeast, right? And isn't there an inlet or two on the school property in that area?
There is a culvert, I think, back in...
There's two sanitary sewer manholes.
That's what those are.
Yeah, they're not storm sewers.
There's manholes back in, but there is a small culvert that they ran through.
Yeah, there's no storm sewer there.
No.
Right. Where's the culvert, where's it run to?
Goes to the south, to that little channel by the old sewer pipe there.
Okay, okay. Oh, sure, okay.
So to the question though, with water, and the back end up in Turtle Creek, the storm sewer on that alternate one and two, that's why we analyzed the conditions in Turtle Creek, and that 100 or 100-year event as well, to give a better representation of that model, well, bush water hole, or...
So you can see, well, free, lesser impact to the, to flow being Kelly Avenue, that is not included in the flood condition, that is still flowing north, north and south leading, passing towards, or present in this area, flooded area, decrease, once again, it's dimension gains as you throw, as we get more prospective solution, we also use a little bit of our benefit there, so our estimate for adding dishes and the culverts, some driveway replacement necessary for those, that's $2,000.
Can we do the price tag of option number three with option number one? You know what I mean? Is there any negotiating with that?
I don't want to do that.
We have to talk to our contractor.
Yeah, I was going to say, we know.
You're setting a bracket, that's great.
Come on, you're the historian, let's have 85 price, 1985 price.
I mean, I could tell you, option three probably existed once when that was built for any, and those ditches are just setting in, I would venture to say you will find pipes under a lot of the ground.
Oh, could be.
When you start to dig those.
Could be.
I have, I have memory of some of them.
He says they're there, yeah.
They're there.
And with the challenge of that...
I'm the one that cut my driveway, I'm the one that cut my yard, I'll stick to...
With that street grid being so flat, it's exactly what Jeff said, and kind of point that Craig said, once you have that snow, whether it's any, any salt, sand, debris, whatever, that comes into that snowpack, it's there, just builds those ditches up while we're doing that snow. And this is real quick, just comparison of the results, I know Michael talked about it, but again, we've almost looked at those, best to temporary solution, right? The benefits that we have in there with the flood reduction, the cost assessment that's associated with those, the whole reconstruction, kind of is that catch-all with the proposed storm sewer outlet to Turtle Creek. So, Michael noted it a little bit, there was a lot of other options that were considered within this corridor or potential solutions, one of those was to remove that low point, it just gets very difficult when you look at everything else outside of the right way to make sure, everything still gets to the right way, and there's some negative impacts elsewhere by raising some of that grade, so that doesn't work. Another one of those options, you know, people think storm water, they think storm water detention basin, with the low point flooding in this area, really, you have your basin down by the bus barn. The storm water detention basin is going to collect, detain, and slow that runoff rate before it leaves the site, so when we're having some of these issues, call it, throughout that drainage basin, we're not going to get much benefit if I put in a storm water detention basin in there.
We already got it, kind of.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you guys got it at the bottom there, and it's reducing it before it gets to Turtle Creek, so...
Yeah. Alright.
The 2.2, is that storm sewer as well as sanitary and water? That's, that's a complete street improvement?
Curb and gutter, sidewalks?
To spec, to our standard?
So there's some nuances with standard in this one.
That's, that's what I'm asking.
Yep, so roadway with, roadway with, all that depends on the challenge within there on trying to meet current design standards within this section.
Go to one, go to number one, get up to, yeah, that one.
Is there a reason we need sidewalks in those...
Well, the downside, ma'am, we've started the sidewalk initiative in Hartford, we want everybody to have sidewalks. And my fear is, as mayor, because I'm the one that opened my mouth and said we wanted to put sidewalks everywhere, I don't want to have our, one of our first projects be, oh, by the way, we're going to do sidewalks everywhere, but not here. And this is, the day that we made our kind of drive, Justin and I made a drive around one day, we were down there quite a bit, I don't know how many times we drove up and down the street, I don't know how many times I said, I don't know how we put sidewalks on this street. Every time we drove down the street, I said it.
Yeah, you guys walk out your front door, under your...
I mean, it's, and that's why I'm really glad you guys are here, because that is, now we're to the rub. It's really going to be hard for us to spend 2.2 and tell you, you got to cut all the way into your yard and put a sidewalk in. I mean, back to this zoning deal, same thing, we're going to be telling you guys stuff that you don't necessarily want to hear from us. And that's not, I would say, I hope I'm not speaking for the council, that's not our intent, you know, we don't like to do bad stuff to our citizens.
But the sidewalk would still be in the right way, right? Not on, nothing on private property, right?
Well, what he's saying, and I'm, I'm looking at street view...
It's just going to, it's...
It's going to look like they've reduced their, yeah, front block.
It's just like RT.
Right away, yes, it's just like RT.
I take a whole section of my driveway out, because that's part of the street now. I wrap my hair in it.
Curtain walk option, to save the five to seven foot boulevard?
So, great question, I think the challenge with some of the curb walk, it's not necessarily on the city side, but for the residents, if you have curb walk, understanding where that snow is going to go when the city cleans the street, and it's going to go right on that walk, that's right on that to the curb, first having some of that boulevard area to protect the whole. We get a 10-inch snow, you got 15-foot of pavement snow right on top of that sidewalk, then it freezes, then it thaws, you know, and that's, that's what makes that challenging in an area like this, some of the downtown areas are a little leakier because of the snow, equipment, a little bigger, a little bit more feasible, but that would be, that would be a tough effect for you guys down the road.
We could heat it, we could heat it, right?
I think some of our, you know, if we're like, what's the obsession with that? I mean, it's not safe...
I think some of our, you know, if you're like, what's the obsession with that? I mean, it's not safe for kids to get to school. They're walking in the middle of the road. And that's been the focus of looking at, we have a map in our city of where it's not walkable. There's no sidewalk
Right.
for kids or people to walk on. They're walking in the middle of the street.
What percentage of property owners in this neighborhood have children? Fifty percent?
But how many maybe come that way?
Oh, yeah. That's a whole different animal.
They walk the sidewalk along the parts or they come from...
Well, the sidewalk is a whole other discussion and it involves us, you know, asking, asking our city engineer to come up with some alternate street standards because they currently don't have one that would comply.
I mean, oh, go ahead, sir.
I live in the corner of Kelly and Van Mark, and in the morning, there is a ton of kids that come from the south
Yep.
from the walkways.
Yep.
And they go down the street because there is no sidewalk on either side of the road.
Correct.
On east or the west side.
Yep.
It's the same way in the evening when kids go home from school and everything else. It's nothing but bikes and people walking through there nonstop.
Because you're the path right to the bridge.
Correct.
Yeah.
Would there be, are, when this is all redone, would there still be parking on both sides of the street?
That's another great question.
That's a good option. Might be a narrow street down beyond our standards, have no parking on one side of the street. Shift the road over so that get the sidewalks where they're not, right in the front yards.
Right.
That'd be, like I said, you'd have no parking on one side of the road.
Right.
As shown, it is thirty-three to go wide back to back, which is not city standards. So you would still be able to park a car on either side. There used to be one way through it. That's typically not an issue on residential streets. It does slow traffic down. But it is a departure from other residential streets. You can still get two ways if you're not parked.
What would be, Justin, maybe you and Michael, I'd ask this question. Craig just hit on something that I've been thinking about on this. If we offset the road to one side or the other, we don't have sidewalk on one side, again, then we're varying from our standard.
Yeah, but it's better, I mean, I don't really, yeah, so like...
I mean, then we just have to have a coin flip to see... Yeah. I was waiting for somebody to say that because that was gonna be the next thing I was gonna say. We'd have to have a coin flip to see which way we move the street. You know? It makes sense, but somebody's gonna end up taking a raw end.
Is your driver drawn down walking the boulevard between the street and sidewalk?
In that? What is that space, Michael? Between the sidewalk and the street? Five?
Five, just like that. Can I reduce that down to three and a half or four foot? And so there is room for that snow being...
Now, wait, it's difficult to get, you know, typically your height is three foot back behind the curb. And then additionally, that three foot strip is kind of difficult to weld. You'll see, maybe in Sioux Falls, a lot of, if you've been on Minnesota, just out of the muscle, they have similar situation there, but they have a sidewalk two or three foot behind the back of the curb. And they just decided to make that all with color concrete because it's easier to maintain that way. A lot of times you have to hold grass established and you have to make sure it's up just because some contractors may not put enough topsoil in that area. It just gives more construction degree than crow hoarders.
And you guys also noticed those Xs are, guess what? Those are trees that if that plant goes, those trees go, all come out.
Is that because of the sidewalk or because of the curb?
Yes.
There's, there's a little caveat on that. So obviously that's not final. This isn't final design. It's still very conceptual. One of the challenges working in, call it a mature neighborhood like your guys' and working with all these utility projects in there, it takes a lot of room to get this work done. So understanding that we're gonna be close to some of those tree roots, whether it's for sanitary service, water service, even just some of the roadway haze prep, sidewalk prep, whatever that may be. That's where we're looking at, you know, potentially being conservative in our goals. That would be identified within final design of the project and what those, what those impacts would be.
I mean, we're open to suggestions on how you'd like to see your street ideally, right? You get to live on it. You get to witness all those kids, maybe close calls with traffic, those sorts of things. Which, which side would be the better side to put the sidewalk on if, if that's the direction you think you wanna go? But at this point, that's a whole nother discussion.
Yes.
And this is just intended to, okay, let's address the water problem. This has been on CIP for the nine years. I've been on council.
Right.
And, you know, it's not a legacy project by any stretch, but it's something that you need to deal with. And it's probably not gonna get any, I guarantee you, it's not gonna be any cheaper to do it tomorrow within reason.
And unfortunately, Travis is right. Part of the reason it's been on the, our capital improvement plan is because we haven't really wanted to have this, I hate to say that, we haven't got this far.
We're looking to get off council.
This is as far as we've taken. Yeah, we're looking to be done.
Trying to stir the pot up a bit.
This would be our project for you guys. Scott said he's gonna pay for it. I haven't thrown that in yet tonight. I figured I'd throw that in.
Lay it in there. Hey, I do a quick question. Okay, so I've heard a couple different directions to start. Please, let me hear your question. What is the designated right of way? Is it from, is it certain amount of feet from the center of the road? Or is it, but where is the right of way? It seems like it's...
About sixty-six feet is typically what it is.
About sixty-six feet? Okay.
Based, based on available GIS data in this area, which is just what they're having, as they, as they record the class, we noted when we're laying this out, that the right of way actually don't constrain. Down here, there's, there's spots where it's just over fifty, but why is Craig noting typically sixty-six?
Exactly. It's shifts. I just noticed that.
Which is why we went, which is why we have a reduced section shown, just so we could ensure that that roadway and the sidewalks were the right way to maintain, you know, correct city standards as, as much as possible.
So at fifty feet, and you gotta get to sixty or seventy, I've gotta ask the question, I mean, are you gonna acquire that property from Shenland one?
That's where we would look at the revised street section and some of those alternatives that we were talking about. Because when you start acquiring that, then your setbacks don't meet, you know, requirements. You just start approaching, approaching, approaching. So that's where we took the approach of looking within inside of that right of way to get those solutions built.
And we don't have state of South Dakota money. We can't be acquiring, you know, stuff.
Exceptions will be made no matter what we do. I mean, there's just...
If you did the drain behind the bus barn and you talked at the bus backup in Turtle Creek, do you know kind of what size rate even it'd take to back up? That's a great question, and I don't know off the top of my head. But we, we look at that a lot, though.
Another question. Addressing all of the drainage issues on Kelly Avenue, will there be any additional drainage issues by bus barn? That will be a question.
This project just looked at strictly addressing that actually out.
Right.
With this alternate, I mean, maybe I'm speaking out of school here, but if you're, if you're channeling it into that pipe and you're taking it, it should in theory eliminate some of the drainage.
There is gonna be some positive effect to the school, because you're not getting that drainage. So that is accurate.
Okay.
And that is where, I believe, within our results, this flooded area east of the right of way, that show that reduction of that level that's going to there.
Right. Yeah, I don't think they're, Todd, to answer your question, if we did that alternate one and we're running the pipe to Turtle Creek, curb and gutter, you're getting, you're doing a lot of things to contain that water. I think going into the bus barn, it's gonna lessen it.
Yes.
We just don't, I don't know that we can, you can kind of model it, but I think that...
I mean, the results are modeled in there, so we have that now in there.
It still looks like there's a lot of pink or purple or whatever color you're calling.
And I noted it briefly as I was going through this, but there, there's a lot of water that comes
Yeah.
from Second Avenue and kind of channelizes down here.
Right.
It's channelizing here, but it really loses its definition as you kind of get south of the sidewalk to where it starts spreading. And there is a portion of that that goes here and then a hundred here. As I also know that there's some backwater from Turtle Creek that's providing some of that down to...
That line is the property line, I assume?
Yeah.
So, I mean, compared to what it is
I have a question for Todd.
without a solution, I mean, it's more on the back of the property.
So, which spot's yours, Todd? Right on, are you right on the path or the...
Your house is surrounded by glue.
Yeah. Yeah, I just...
That's you right there?
It goes right around.
Okay. When they took those...
You don't have twenty, you don't have twenty water sensors in your basement or anything?
I'm good.
You're good.
When they took, when they took those trees out, did that change, wasn't there a whole bunch of pine trees behind you?
All the pine trees are dying because it's, the water's so saturated.
So, did that change it any when the trees were gone?
No.
It's really not drainage area, so I mean, it wasn't, the trees weren't told to go along.
Doing anything?
No.
So it didn't make...
The problem is people discharged on Van Mark into the backyard of the Kelly residence. There's some pumps, and then those some pumps had doubled the water to move.
Yeah.
And then it all just doubled the water that came down to the corner.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, that's something we didn't discuss is, you know, some pump collection system. I don't know if, is that still an issue where those residents on Van Mark discharge?
I mean, we just had so much rain and water.
Yeah.
They're just trying to do what they could down that point and just, you know...
That's the dream.
But it would've made, but it would've made more sense.
There used to be a whole row of pines.
It would've made more sense for them to discharge on the Van Mark because it is curb and gutter.
Correct.
You know?
Well, that's a deep question, as I like to say. Yeah, this is, believe me, this is a hard, this is a hard one. And nine years, this is as far as we've ever gotten with this.
I think I made the motion. You gotta start somewhere, right?
So...
I think it's, I mean, we all have a lot to think about.
Yeah.
And I, you know, you guys, obviously financially, you know, there would be an assessment with options one or two, right? I assume we would have to vote on that, but that's our practice. But, and then with the space and the trees and in return, your property might be worth significantly more despite the smaller front.
And the hundred and fifty thousand you proved in the budget meeting, that was the designated for?
Probably engineering or...
Engineering, yeah.
Be the next phase, which would be to design that street.
Right.
Get everything, yeah.
Which we have to make decisions about, right?
I mean, there's, this is like we told the folks on the zoning, there is a lot of stuff that's gotta be decided before this deal's ever gonna happen.
It seemed like the right thing to do before we paid them to design the street.
Yeah. Well...
And that's it. You put in a new street and you just either make it worse or don't solve it. I don't see much.
We really didn't wanna just be shooting into the air. We wanted to at least have an idea. One, can we fix it? Because really, there was some discussion, we didn't know if there, what can we do with this? And I still kind of have a little bit of that feeling, how we can fix this.
At least if it doesn't work, we can say, "Well, your models were all wrong."
Yeah. We always got, oh, we gotta keep somebody on the, you know, somebody's gotta be staying on the hook.
The engineers have experience for that.
They do. So anybody else got any other questions or comments? We really appreciate you guys coming. And I would say, I don't know, we'll probably have to talk about this a couple times and see what we're gonna do. Before anything's gonna get decided, we'll do the same thing we did this time. We'll send you a letter, let you know what we're gonna do. Because ultimately, if we do a project and we're gonna assess you, we're gonna be spending your money. We wanna make sure if we're gonna do that, we at least give you a chance to come and yell at us first.
And just for the record, the next phase doesn't cost anybody anything, right? The taxpayers as a whole are gonna pay for those engineering.
Right.
That engineering, that engineering can sit on a shelf for one year, five years. I mean, unless something significant in that area changes, that engineering is, is gonna, it's gonna be solid.
Oh, and I wanna share one other thing with you. I don't know how many along the street have had their pipes redone like Todd had to do this last winter. I mentioned to Justin, was that today or yesterday or when we talked, and I said, "If we get, go forward and we end up on one and we're gonna do the whole deal, we should probably come up with a alternative or a way that that would be bid." So if people wanted to change their stuff, so to speak, they would have that option to work with the contractor. We'd put it in there as an add-on. I don't know how you'd do it. We, we don't have all those details worked out, but that may be something that we'd look at. Because rather than go in and tear everything up and do it, and then three months later have to come up and tear somebody's front yard up.
Well, the city, the way the standard's been for city projects is we bring it to the property line.
Correct. And, but what I'm saying, Craig, is we give them the opportunity, then they can work with the contractor. If they wanted their stuff dug up to the house, they can do it.
It could be a fixed price.
Yeah, maybe there's not many left.
There could be a fixed price per foot.
The last ten years.
What's that?
Who's all had it done?
Victor six total up there so far.
Six of you have it?
Six.
Victor six.
But long story short, pardon its point. There's, there's an opportunity the city would fill their portion. Obviously, there would be some contractual agreement with the landowner, but with those residents, some option on contractors.
If it would work.
You know, it certainly seems like it makes some sense to plan for the known versus the unknown. And as this project moves along to become more knowns, right? And that next known is, what would be your, what would be your assessment per foot? Not when my line breaks in the middle of winter.
Right.
Really at the mercy of a contractor and the meter's running.
Yeah.
So some things to consider.
So I just ask why, I mean, does it have to be an assessment for the property owner? Like, is that typical or...
Yes.
Unless, unless you've already made an assessment for a street improvement, then, we did a project on Mont...
Mont and Sex.
Last year. They'd already paid for that in the nineties.
Yep.
And so then, at that point, we didn't make them pay for another street assessment. The city as a whole covered that expense.
Does any of Sioux Falls do that?
We don't know if Sioux Falls.
I, yeah, I wonder.
I'm sure they do. They probably do. Every city.
I don't know that town.
It's pretty standard for us.
It's very standard. And that's what over, how does that work again? As long, I'd hit mine when it was on.
Ten years?
Yeah, up to ten years. And it's actually eleven, really from the end of the project. You have until that following year where you need to make your first payment.
Right.
There's various payment options. You can either pay it upfront, a loan on it, or pay it through your county taxes. So I mean, there's options for payment of it.
And the assessment's just a small portion of what the city, what the actual costs is.
That's what I said. Whether we spend two point two or
Three hundred.
Hundred, yeah. I mean, if we put curb and gutter in, that's just a small, it's how contribute with that. It doesn't change based on the overall project.
And at what point then would the general assessment be allocated? I mean, it was one or two, I guess, and then three, obviously. But what, at what juncture do you initiate a new general assessment?
So our policy is, and we've changed it slightly, is that when the project is done, when the project is done, you have one year to the next October to pay that before it'll go to the county or on payment plan. So basically, it gives you a year to either make installments to the city or pay it in full to the city.
Right.
You got a year to, to make payments if you wish. Whatever balance is left, that will then get sent to the county for the ten-year payment plan.
Maybe I didn't think much of that.
So I think I know what you're saying, Scott, is if we go to, if we do phase two or, or totally take a portion of it, then
Right.
then it'd probably be up to the council, but those portion would be paying assessment. The rest of you wouldn't be paying anything because you wouldn't have the improvements out of your road.
And that's, okay, so...
Whoever gets the improvements would get assessed.
Yeah, okay. And, and right now, we're at two hundred and fifty dollars for the linear foot, right?
Yep.
Okay. And, and so that, the general assessment for wherever the construction's gonna take place, then would be re-implemented so that you could come up with, in essence, a new figure, right?
To your point, Scott, yeah, there's, again, timing is of the essence. It's not gonna be any cheaper than it is today.
Oh, I agree. Right.
Because we do a yearly review of our, of our street assessment.
Yeah.
You know, that could go up to three hundred dollars next year. And so really, if you as...
Or it could stay the same.
It could stay the same, yeah. If you as a, if you as a block, have a, have a block party decide, "Let's just bite the bullet. Let's make this improvement," that would make things significantly easier, you know? Because what does it take? What percentage of the residents on that street? Sixty percent?
Sixty percent.
Having been the guy that circulated the petition to improve the street, it's not, it's, it's not terrible. I mean, I think you're all very intelligent individuals. You're, you're obviously here. You care. And so, we're just, we care as well. We're just trying to be proactive for you.
Sure.
So, I've never been part of anything like this before, so what do we expect next? Like, should we be coming to every meeting?
Oh, no. Well...
Talk about every meeting or what?
I would say we'll let you know. I doubt, I would say right now, it probably won't be on the agenda for at least a couple meetings because we're gonna think about it for a while and look at it.
We don't have any money, money budgeted to approve.
For this year, any, you know?
Right, right.
ISG to begin the street design. And so really, I would, you don't have to, shouldn't have to worry about this until 2026. I'm your councilman for your ward, so in the event you're concerned about something, you can give me a call.
We did, I mean, the agenda's out too. I know it put me in the bud, but I mean, I think we promised we would let you know this time. And I mean, we would wanna let you know.
You could have watch parties, Tuesday nights, city council meetings.
Yeah. That is riveting TV, I'm just telling you. Riveting.
It's gonna come down, council staff, engineers get together and looking at it and trying to put what we... Council staff, engineers get together and looking at it and trying to put what we think is the best scenario forward, which is gonna take some time.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
And then, and then having kind of grown up, designed, thought about, then have another meeting with folks out here. So here's what we're, here's what we're kinda thinking with the project.
Could we do something, uh, Teresa, and I think this is kinda to your point back there. Next time this is on our agenda, like where we're, where we're getting a little bit more serious, can we somehow, I mean, I know it's on, can we some, can we send a letter?
We did this.
I know we did that this side, can we do that next time, I guess, is what I'm asking.
You know what that means, I call Teresa and say, hey, make sure we send out a letter.
This is a, yeah, it's a big deal. I mean, it's a, and I know something needs to be done there and I don't know what it is, but that's why we have engineers hired to hopefully help us out and make some decisions. But also like, when we get to a point where there's gonna be some decisions made, I think having your guys' input is gonna be.
Yeah.
A huge influence on like, what has to be done here.
I mean, this has been really good. I mean, this, this is what I hope, that we'd be able to come and lay this out and you guys would say, gee, Wes, you guys are in trouble, we don't know what you should do. That's kinda what they said.
Well, but I think it's important to look at the, the water mass and like, what do you wanna deal with and how does it benefit you? And, or maybe you think it doesn't and you don't wanna pay your two fifty for landing your foot.
How many of you, how many residents were in a floodplain at different times? It seems like that thing has moved. Anybody on Kelly, were they ever in a floodplain?
I was, I moved in, believe it or not.
You were?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Last week.
Okay. I mean, going way back to my teensy days.
You weren't on a female floodplain, I don't think.
No. What?
You weren't on a female floodplain.
No, no.
None of these residents were.
No, there's not.
Toby wasn't.
Oh, you're sure.
Well, they knew who you were.
And that's before they did Second Street also, so.
Well, I appreciate, so we built, we lived in our first house on fire, on South Fire.
Okay.
And our backyard was in a floodplain before the city did some drainage mapping and whatever to fix that issue so I could get out. So, I mean, that's, nobody's in, cause that's not helpful, but it does make a difference.
It does. It's nice to control the water. Having lived on a gravel road, um, in Hartford, just, it's nice to drive on a paved street with curving gutter and see people and kids walking on the sidewalks and riding their bikes and they're not in the road. I mean, there's, there's definitely some positives to it.
Well, before you all scoot out, remember, we have an opening in Morgwone that you guys all live there. Call me.
North and South Kelly.
Call me. We appreciate you guys coming. And you don't have to, you don't have to rush out.
A lot more riveting stuff here.
More in here.
Um. It was on the, I mean, we can, but it's on our website. Yep.
Yeah.
So if you go to website, go to the government section and find like a meeting agenda.
I don't need none, I can look at it online.
No, that's all.
Oh, he wants the printed.
The actual stuff.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's on our website.
That's on the website, okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. All right. Don't steal our stuff, Scott.
Did that name your hit?
Didn't it have a mark?
We'll, we'll assess you for it.
Okay, we have one more thing on, uh, was that under, uh, ISG, your report that?
I can, I can, uh, western Meadows addition, we talked about this last council meeting, just on those storm sewer improvements there, um, and looking at city participation in that project to get some improved drainage in that area. So we did get cost back, uh, from that developer, I believe, I told you guys last time, it was gonna be about forty thousand. Uh, that cost came in thirty-three thousand, six hundred dollars, so we would just be looking at an official approval from the council tonight to go forward with implementing those storm sewer improvements for the western Meadows addition.
What's the, I'm, I'm just kidding, what's the cost, thirty-three?
Thirty-three, sixty.
That's coming to us in the form of, uh, basically a proposal from the contractors that I'm looking at.
Yeah, it's essentially, we wrote it up as a development agreement on there, so we request pricing from them. If I were final, they would, uh, provide actual pricing on that.
Doesn't, it doesn't have any, uh, what's the word I'm looking for here? Letterhead. I wasn't sure if it was ISG, I wasn't sure if it was Nielsen.
It's an agreement between, between the city and the contractor, so.
Yeah, and this one isn't, isn't, it says owner developer in the city, so it's not very specific. Can we approve that without this being more formal?
So this is a draft that we haven't approved previously and Tom has reviewed for other developments where we have done that side of it.
Okay.
So we're just saying, yes, we wanna do a draft of the stuff.
Proceed.
Okay.
Yep.
Motion to approve, uh, the, uh, western Meadow, storm sewer improvements in western Meadows addition, has come in.
Second.
Any discussion? Harry Nun will vote, Mattson.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Parachek.
Yes.
Shilling, boy, I haven't called names for a while, it took me a second there, at least an hour. All right, anything else you guys are?
Nothing.
You kind of monopolized.
I just got one, one question.
Yeah.
There was a gentleman in here a month or two ago about some of the water.
I'm still working with him, it's an interesting, interesting aspect that's going on around the north side of town.
Yep.
There's been some, some washouts, you know, within his field there, so we're still continuing to analyze.
There's conversation going on, which is good.
Yeah, so I, I'm in eye area contact after rainfall events, just gathering about it and I understand what to do there or two.
Okay, that's all, I, I just wanna make sure someone was in touch with them.
Okay.
Have you, have you looked at the historicals? That area, I mean, that area's always been wet.
Yeah, I haven't gone back on Google, cause you went back on Google Earth and go to year after year after year, right?
Go quit with it.
I think some of the water's actually slowed down through there, cause I used to feed my pond and keep it full all the time and it goes dry a lot, so.
Yeah. All right, anything else, Sean?
Nope.
All right, thank you. Craig, we'll go to you, your report.
Um, I'm just gonna, most of the stuff's in report, um, I forgot to bring a plaque down for the, that we got, is it here? Oh, just brought it down, okay.
I was gonna say something nice about you, so go ahead and give your report.
You got excited?
So, Jay Adrian, um, Irwin did start with us, he's the new employee that's been going down to Sewer Plant. Um, seems excited about, he's been working out well, uh, very pleasant to be around. Um, so I think things are, he's ready to jump in and keep working on it. So I think we have a good candidate for a good person there to fulfill that spot.
Tell him to jump into the water that's the cleanest, not, you know, I know it's got different sections there, but.
Yeah, no, it's been, uh, it's been going good, like, just two days now, so things are going good.
When will he be full-time out there, is that, that'll be in October?
So, full-time out there might not ever happen.
Okay.
Uh, it depends on, there'll be days that he'll be out there full-time, there'll be days that he might be out there for four hours or so, then he'll be jumping over helping us.
Okay.
So he checks in at the shop every morning and then heads out there. If we have a big blizzard going on, he's gonna be hanging around.
And then another, and I was thinking about this today, and Justin or Michael, maybe you guys can answer this. Cause once we are online with that plant, is there anybody with ISG or is there a consultant, right, that's gonna work with Craig and Jesse and our, and Jay, Jay Adrian?
Yeah, so obviously Rachel's still here in Sioux Falls, she'll always, uh, answers Craig's call no matter when calls her.
Okay.
I know she's passionate about that, but we also do have certified operators on staff too.
You do?
Yes, we do. So, if, if we need any assistance there, we're always here to help support, uh, call it to Hartford.
This thing's been on the night since, uh, July twenty-eighth.
So like all of, like, I'm gonna flush my toilet, dumb question.
It's going there.
It's going there.
It is.
Everything is.
Since July twenty-eighth, it's.
Oh, yeah.
Processing and.
All of our results, so card from.
That'd be the first thing I think of tonight.
You must have not, you must have not watched my video.
I watched your video on the highway.
The poop shoot.
You should've watched the one on the sewer plant, it said that. We're all, we're running all of the wastewater's coming to the, it's like the second thing that Rachel said.
Trust but verify, mayor, trust but verify.
Whatever.
So, all of our sampling results have been coming back really nice, so it's been running great.
Okay, then third question, when we do our breaking, can we please have him drink water out of there?
I'm telling you, if, again, if you watch the video, I'm telling you, that water is so clear coming down to there.
That's what I'm saying, I talked to Rachel that one time.
Unbelievable. I'm telling you, it, you'll be amazed if you get to go down to the.
I'm done with questions.
It'd be more impressive if someone from ISG drank it, right?
I, I think Ari would, so.
Okay, well, it's, I'm, someone's doing it and it might be me.
You got anything else, Craig?
That's all I got.
All right, I wanna make a, we'll just do this, let's have, uh, Teresa take a picture first.
Oh, boy.
We don't have that in the budget.
Come here, yeah, come up here. Come up here. So you all know, we, we get Clean Water Award every year and we've had it for twenty years. So Craig's done a great job of doing this and, uh, Teresa handed me this plaque and I figured we'd, uh, take a picture, thank you. Thank you, Craig, you bet. I'll let you hang that up, maybe not in your office. Thanks, we do appreciate everything you do, Craig. All right, who's next?
Karen? Okay, I know what you're gonna say.
I have my reports. I do have an action item, um, our auditors have finished our audit. Well, Teresa and I have looked it over, everything appears to be in order and I do need a motion to approve it and then I'll send it on to the Department of Legislative Audit.
Motion to approve the twenty twenty-four audit report as presented.
Second. Any discussion?
I got a question just real quick here, um, net position's up from nineteen million to thirty-one million, what's the big jump in that, just out of curiosity?
Waste water plant?
Yeah.
Probably the biggest one. We got a big asset out there.
You've heard about that project?
So what you're saying, that's the net worth essentially of it?
Right, exactly.
It goes from nineteen million to thirty-one.
Yeah, the debt went up as well.
Yep.
That's, that's why that's the net.
Yep. All right, anything else?
Or the gross, that should really technically be the gross then. Yeah, that should be the gross. The gross value of the city went up, because to your point, it doesn't include any debt.
It does.
That is the net position.
That is the net, yep. That is after the expenses, internal liabilities rather, yep.
Okay, great, all right.
So it's not a wastewater treatment plant, cause we owe as much on that as we.
Well.
Well, the grant money came in and we're fully paying it, so there isn't a whole lot of.
Okay, okay, okay.
It's a twelve million, it's a twelve million dollar increase.
Well, and it's, it's up December.
We had ten, we had ten million.
Yeah, it comes up last year, December thirty-first. So we're kind of in the middle of it yet, yeah.
Gotcha.
Good, good. Good question. All right, anything else? If not, we'll vote, Shilling.
Yes.
Parachek.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Mattson.
Yes.
All right, anything else, Karen?
Nope, that was it.
Okay. Teresa?
I don't have much to, um, add to, Craig said that, Adrian's our, sorry.
Jay.
Jay Adrian, I know, I gotta keep, we're gonna call him Jay.
Yeah, he said Jay was called.
Started up on Monday, yep, seems to be going, so far, so good. We are still, um, trying to, are taking applications for a public works assistant. We heard, uh, we interviewed one, you know, a couple, three weeks back that is still interested in the position. We're trying to line up another interview with another candidate this week. He hasn't got back to us on one interview time to work. The rest of the applicants we've got so far are not good fits or candidates, so, you know, we'll, we'll see how these interviews go and, um, keep taking applications.
Where's the job posted at?
We've got it all on Hire-Quick, everywhere we saw the media outlets, and we got it all through the city and we've got it all, yeah, so it's going to all the different.
Job boards, yep.
Yep, job boards, so. Yeah, so hopefully we will get somebody, I don't know, Craig would like one sooner than later, because it's a lot going on.
I think that, I mean, seems like a, a good job for, for people, so, no, yeah.
Um, and then, as mentioned earlier too, uh, the ribbon cutting has been set for the wastewater treatment plant, October third at ten-thirty. ISG is working on it, invitation for us, hopefully we'll get that later this week, early next week. Me, Arden and Jill sat down and kinda went through who's all going in, what we're gonna do, you know, what we're gonna serve. So I think we're getting everything coordinated in there, so we'll have more information for you guys as we get closer to that date though. Um, otherwise, um, you also maybe have seen in your packets, the new signs for Lions Park, um, that the Girl Scouts are working on. They are getting that completed, uh, this shows them all painted, the inside of the letters are gonna be black, she said too, and then they, um, also replacing the posts out there for them too. So hoping to get it done by the end of the month is what she told us.
Isn't it? Those gotta be brand new, right? Those, they start with new boards?
Those are new boards, yes, they get new boards and they round it out and.
Those are not free for, yeah, yeah, those are, those are brand new, those are.
So Benjamin approached me tonight for the meeting and we're gonna look for a better location for the sign, cause right now where it was set, you don't notice it.
No.
That was where it was, because there used to be another road that went through there.
Oh, sure.
So it kinda was like right at the point to the three roads, so we'll be, get together and see if we can find a better spot.
Right now, it's kinda sitting back in there, yeah, making better stuff.
Which if you look, it says two oh two Vandemark as the address and the park.
Yeah.
So as long as it's on a Vandemark side.
Yeah, absolutely, we can put it by anywhere, you know, just find the front door and put it next to that.
Option B is remove the Vandemark address.
Yeah.
True.
Which is the last board on the side.
All right.
That looks good, thank you for.
Yeah, thanks Karen for the, and the Girl Scouts.
I just provide space for them to do it.
There you go. All right, anything else, Teresa?
Anything, I'll give you a quick update on the couple of tests we're looking at, um, to let you know with the Windsor group. We have got the H plats for Second Street, all filed and done. I have the deeds, um, signed over to the city this week and meeting with the property owners this week, so we can get that filed. And then, once that's done, we move ahead with the annexation of the roadways and then the new tipped-up boundaries can be made and we can go forward. So I think we're kind of getting that completed and we're working on it. I put in there, Aston Development, I hadn't heard anything, I actually got a phone call from Sam Aston today about his. Basically, I think he's just picking my brain, asking me, you know, what do we think the council, what are we looking at or whatever? And I reiterated what we kinda had talked about, that, you know, we really want you to look at your actual spend, to see what you actually need. It has to be a realistic ask from the city, you know, what that number is, I mean, you know, you're a development leader on the bud. And I did commit, I was talking, eight million is kind of way out of reach for us, so he understood that. And so, um, I think we, I'm sure we'll keep working with, um, with, and, you know, um, his team and come forward with some kind of ask in, in the future, so, but. And to co-ame some, we're gonna have our annual meeting, they meet annually, kind of updates, that's gonna be, um, next week. I'll be attending that as one of the board members. So I got, unless you have questions for me.
All right, any big, any questions for you, Teresa? All right, thank you, we'll move to new business, we have a couple items there. First one is to request to release funding for the Hartford Downtown Inc. for four thousand three ninety-five fifty-seven. And this is for, uh, banners and brackets.
Motion to approve funding request.
I respectfully request that Michelle abstain from voting, she's the vice president of the downtown department.
Oh, I'm sure she will go into. Oh, I'm sure she'll be going to.
Sure she will.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
That's all you can do with each other.
Yeah, give me another example, I don't, I don't. Motion to approve funding request for downtown Hartford Inc. for four thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Second.
Any discussion? Harry Nun will vote, Mattson.
Yes.
Bowen.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Parachek.
Yes.
Shilling.
Abstain.
Thank you.
You should have just voted no.
That would've looked better.
Wouldn't matter, wouldn't matter.